Record. Oh, you did already. Okay.
Okay. Cindy, will you read the ceremonial responses?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with the meeting notice provided on Monday, January 11th to the Hunterdon County Democrat, the Trenton Times, various individuals on listserv, department heads, and city engineer and city attorney when I say was purpose advertised. The meeting will be recorded using Zoom. The meeting agenda offers the planned action items of the governing body to the extent known at the time of publication. Would you like a roll call?
Please.
Councilwoman Lambert.
Here.
Councilman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Stegman.
Here.
Council President Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Fall.
Here. Can I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence for those who are fighting in our military armed forces at home and abroad, and for those who are fighting on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you. Okay. So this is a working session where we are going to have to take some votes. I know we were trying to get away from that, but we do have some time-sensitive action items that we need to take here tonight. So we'll be going over those. I'm going to start with Cindy, we're holding the liquor license resolution until the closing date?
That's correct. That's the only.
So Resolution Number 60 is a resolution to authorize an amendment to our contract with our planners. We've had, we've been in ongoing discussions with Green Acres and a couple of other state and county entities regarding the next stages for the Clausen property. And in order for us to continue those conversations, there's a couple of applications that we have to start filling out. Those have to be managed by a planner. Those are listed here. We may not need to do all three of these, but we wanted to make sure that we had the space to do them in a timely fashion. So are there any questions regarding, regarding these? This is exclusively for the preservation side of this project. There's nothing to do with the, the project plan as a whole and what we're doing with any of the buildings. This is just for, for us to continue to move forward on the, on the preservation side.
Maybe the price assumes.
So the, there's a broken up price underneath, which includes. Yeah. Are there any questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 60, 2021?
Moved.
Councilwoman Taylor for the first.
Second.
Councilman Stegman for the second. All in favor, or I guess we'll do a roll call. Cindy, do you mind?
Sure. Councilwoman Lambert.
Yes.
Councilman Sanders. Councilman Stegman.
Yes.
Council President Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Fall.
Yes. Okay, moving on. We have some really exciting news. I'm going to do a small presentation for the council and for the folks who've joined us here tonight, just to talk a little bit about a project that came to our attention. I don't know, Cindy, late last week, the two weeks ago. So the, the background information here is that Congress, for the first time since Barack Obama was president, have started to consider approving earmarks again. Earmarks are basically where congressional members can gain federal funding or advocate for federal funding to their own home districts. And so those were canceled for more than a decade. They're back and they're being called community project funding. So each member of Congress gets, depending on what, sort of which, why am I blanking on this? Department they're in, whatever committees they're on, they get a certain number of community project funding requests. These came out of the blue. It was an unexpected federal change, a significant federal change in how Congress works. We heard about it and, you know, had to make a split decision about what project we thought had the best chance of being chosen by Congressman Malinowski to add, you know, to advocate for us for that funding. So there were a couple of stipulations on what we knew was going, was going to sort of automatically disqualify something. One, it had to have no concerns from any state or county agencies, which immediately took the Swan Creek project out of the mix. That was obviously our first initial thought here was that we should, our Swan Creek flood project is the, of the most serious concern and where we have the densest number of repeat flood housing. But unfortunately, the DEP wouldn't be willing to sign off on that project because they have significant concerns about the land swap. And so it was immediately removed from the list. Then we had to go through and think about something that could get bipartisan support that was of reasonable cost. To a certain extent, we've achieved that. And then also it had to fit into a previously existing federal grant fund. So we brainstormed with a small group of volunteers who were assembled and came up with this project I'm about to show you guys, which we're calling the Music Mountain Green Infrastructure, Woodland Restoration, Stormwater Management, and Green Infrastructure Project, which just rolls off the tongue. So for those of you who aren't aware, Music Mountain was acquired by the previous administration in part as a opportunity to manage and preserve those steep slopes as a part of a stormwater management plan. That hill has about a little over 780 ash trees, or I guess a little under 800 ash trees that have been infested with the Emerald Ash Bore. The, so that is a complicated issue. To give you some perspective, the state of New Jersey expects municipalities in the state to spend close to $10.7 billion on ash tree removal in the next 10 years. But because we are in a high densely, basically a dense ash tree area, we are, it's going to cost the city quite a bit of money to remove those trees. We also have to consider the stabilization of that bank and the ongoing erosion, erosion issues that already exist on that property because the stormwater management system that was built there was built before the West Amwell Music Mountain project was built. So we're having, we've seen an increase of during heavy rains of stormwater coming down that hill and a significant amount of new erosion on that hill. So why should we care about this? Beyond the hiking trails that people use there and dying ash trees are not only a liability to the city, but dangerous to people on that hill. The, this ongoing erosion is actually a regional issue, which makes it a really good candidate for being an earmark that Congress would care about. The, this ongoing erosion is silt-heavy erosion and that silt has a lot of different nutrients that get pumped into the Delaware River. If you guys have seen on the canal and in the Delaware in the last five years, there's been an increase of algae bloom. That algae bloom is really bad for the natural ecology of both the canal and the Delaware River. So this silty erosion is contributing to that algae bloom. It also has some really negative effects for homeowners in our town, right? We've seen an increase of flash flooding in the last 10 years. And ultimately, if that hill isn't stabilized correctly, you know, there could be really much more serious effects to some critical infrastructure that sits at the bottom of the hill, not only Ely Field and the school, but also our fire department. So we put together a group of some really dedicated volunteers, two of whom I really want to shout out here. Marion Borch, who is our Lambeville Goes Wild representative, who worked diligently on this with me, sort of nonstop for about 10 days. And Megan Ruff, who's our Parks and Rec manager, who helped us get all of the quotes for, you know, to make sure that we had a, a full scope of what we were recommending this, this project was going to cost. So the idea of how to attack all of these issues is both simple and complicated. We are going to, we're basically, and you know, I can, I'll share a couple of pictures as well here, but we're going to cut down the ash trees that have been infested by the Emerald Ash Bore. We're going to leave their trunks, so, which will create some amount of stabilization on the hill. We're going to use those ash trees to line the nature trails and also to create some blockage for the ongoing water so that the water has more time to sit and get absorbed into the ground rather than rushing onto Ely Field. We're going to use some green infrastructure techniques, including, you know, additional planting, strategic placement of rocks, as well as the trees to slow the flow of water, which should help both with the silty runoff and with the flash flooding. We're going to replace that footbridge that's fallen into one of the caverns created by the significant erosion. And then we're also going to be working with the, with a, what's called the New Jersey Strike Team to go through and remove invasive plants, replant, fence off those replanted areas so that deer can't destroy the work we just did. And wait for this, basically to reforest this hill with native plants. This is, will help with the ecology on the hill as well as within the Delaware River and will help to solve the prop, the flash flooding problem on Ely Field. So I just want to share a couple of things with you here. Can everybody see that? Okay. So if you, this is the, the area in question here. You've got the football field here, the baseball field, the school. So, and then the fire department here. You can see that there are three significant erosion sites. This is where most of the stormwater is coming down and creating some really negative runoff into this stormwater basin, which is regularly overflowing and coming up onto the field. So along here, here is the, I believe this is the trail. And basically what the plan is, is to take this entire area, add the stormwater infrastructure as well as using these ash trees that we're going to have to cut down to help to slow some of the water along the, along these paths in order to, again, make sure that we're getting more absorption directly on the hills. I'll show you guys, this is all stuff, hold on here. I'm sure this is all stuff that you've seen before, but I just want to quickly go through some of the, the issues that we're hoping to, I don't know, that we're hoping to stop here. This is flooding at Ely Field in 2019. This is flooding from the North Franklin Street. This is directly in conjunction with this, this hill flooding and the erosion, as well as there being too much pressure on this. There's a, a storm drain that's operated by the DOT back year. This is being overburdened in heavy rainstorms. This is not a hurricane. This is just a heavy summer rain. Again, this is a, the LPS parking lot, which gets regularly flooded. And then another version of the LPS parking lot from 2020. These are happening with increasing frequency because the, both because the erosion is getting more significant and because the stormwater management tools that we have on the site now are proving to be insufficient. I want to look a little bit at some photos of this erosion here. I think it's very clear that you can see where this water flow is coming from and the, like, you know, the damage that that erosion is creating. And hold on. This is the, what was the footbridge that the Boy Scouts created. Because this erosion has gotten so significant, you can see over here that that bridge actually fell into this particular cavern. And then finally, we've got, you know, basically there's a lot of proof. I don't think anybody needs any more proof that the Emerald Ash Bores are serious here, but we've got, you can see these are telltale, that, those little squiggly lines there are telltale signs of Emerald Ash Bore infestation. And we have hundreds of trees that have been infested with, with these. They have to be removed. So that's the basics. We put together a really aggressive application for the congressman, which included a history of Music Mountain and everything that the city has done since 1998, specifically on steep slope maintenance, flood mitigation and flood protection. And, you know, the, what's good to hear or what's good to know is that the city's been focused on this for decades. This is, has been an ongoing issue. We have had, there's records of concern specifically on this hill, which get, makes this a really, a high likelihood that we're going to be chosen for the next round of these earmarks. We were able to get letters of support from the Chair of the County Commission. And we've asked that the County Commission pass a similar resolution to the one that I'm recommending we pass tonight, as well as our entire state delegation. We got letters of support from all of our local community groups, including Lambeville Goes Wild, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Ramblers, the softball and softball and baseball team, the cheerleaders. We've got letters of support from the Hunterdon County, South Hunterdon County Regional School District. So we were able to put together about 12 bipartisan letters of support within 10 days. And I've been told that we had one of the more aggressive and comprehensive arguments to make to the congressman. So with that, does anybody have any questions about the details of the project as they stand now?
So just in the project mayor, the, I'm just trying to imagine what this looks like in terms of the Emerald Ash Trees that are taken down. And you, you said that the, the, the trees, the, the downed trees then would be used to mitigate the, you know, the flow. So what, what does that look like? Like, are the trees going to be laid like into the gulches or?
So the trees will be laid in various areas to reduce the flow. Though, some of those trees we're hoping to also reutilize to line the trail of the nature trail. So we're going to try and use those resources as, as readily as possible. Some of the stormwater management will just be sheer engineering. We have two, you know, if you walk, if you go up past Phillips Barber onto the top of this hill, you'll see that there's really only two storm drains. Those need to be recalibrated by our engineers and that is part of the request that we're making. So there's some, some real stormwater management infrastructure in there. And then beyond the trees, we're also doing a ton of new planting. So we'll do, for every cut ash tree, we'll be adding another three, sort of one inch tree. And then we're also, as we remove these invasive species, we'll be replanting at a significant rate to try and, that, and that is a really good way to manage stormwater.
And then I, one question on the process. So, so I'm sure different municipalities are pitching the congressman. He will select from the, his district, the ones that he wants to put forward. And then just in terms of process, does it go to the speaker then, or how is it?
It goes to, it depends. So I think we have a really good argument to be heard in a couple of different committees, both appropriations and transportation and infrastructure. You know, I, when we started this project, I thought that this was a long shot after having put together this application and having spoken to other mayors. I think we are in a really dynamite position. So we'll be, if we don't win in appropriations, we can go over to TNI. And TNI has about $1.9 billion that it's about to be appropriated to, to that particular committee. And actually Tom sits on TNI, so he gets to choose more of those sites. But ultimately, that's up to his legislative staff. And then there is an ultimate question mark about whether or not, and this comes back to Mitch McConnell, whether or not McConnell agrees to hear or appropriate any of these community benefit funds at all. That's a bargaining chip he's using right now. But even if he doesn't, because this application is so aggressive and because, like, we've already done so much work on this, I actually think if we can't, can't get federal funding through Congress, we have a really good shot at a National Forestry's grant. And if that, and that may cover only the tree work, but we also have some, I think we have a really good shot also at some Green Acres Management Funding, because this was purchased with Green Acres, Green Acre Stewardship Funding, Management Funding. And then there's also some other state funds available through the DEP. So we may be able to, the, the best and easiest way is just to give us the $2.6 million we've requested from Congress. But if not, you know, I feel really confident we can run this application around to a couple of other agencies to look for either partial or full funding for this.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do we have any idea how long the timing of the, what the project duration will be? Just out of curiosity.
Do you mean? Well, I'm.
How long will it take? How long will it take to complete the project? Assuming we get funding, assuming we get funding, is there a timeline of how long the work will take?
Oh, so just, so just from sort of shovels in the ground to the end?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just kind of wondering. But actually, that's a good question, too. How long do we think it's going to take, get the money? We don't know that.
So, I mean, very likely we won't see any of this funding until 2022.
Okay.
So the answer from the engineering side, they expected, I believe, and don't quote me on this, I'm trying to look for this right now. I believe they said 10 weeks of work. And then we're also, we would also be working with a, we have an arborist who was a part of this application. That arborist, I mean, this is an incredible amount of work. You're talking about hundreds of years. So, you know, and it's also weather dependent. So we expect that it's going to take, you know, I'll, I'll say two quarters, half a year.
Okay.
Wait, but then you have to consider here that this is a reforestation plan. So once the, you know, sort of, once the stuff is planted, you're not really done the project, right? You have to then allow for the forest to repopulate itself, which includes building out a fence. We might want to reduce, the city might want to reduce use of that hill for several years to allow for those plants to grow back and to ensure that, you know, this, the wild populate, the wildlife population can start to, you know, revive itself. So this is not just a, you know, cut down the trees and you're done. This is a multi-year infrastructure plan.
Right. So it will be several years before we're, it's in a position where we're kind of reaping the benefit of the work being done.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As in most things in government, unfortunately.
In life.
Are there any other questions?
I just have one comment. Well, first of all, thank you to you and everyone else who worked on this so quickly. I live on the hill, so I'm, I'm, I'm personally interested in this. But I just wanted to raise something that I brought up in the past, but we've had a lot of other priorities. Just thinking about if we are going to have this level of investment into management of the hill, we should also think about how we communicate to residents about what they can and should or should not, in most cases, put into our forested areas. So that's sort of a, how do we manage our yard waste and keep the edges of our natural areas looking as nice as they could?
Yeah, you know, we've seen a, an unfortunate increase in yard waste dumping that, unfortunately, that, well, preceded my mayorship, but has been a real problem. And, you know, a question of how we can better serve community members to make sure that their weight, it's available for them to, you know, for pickup and still, you know, manage and control when and where they're dumping. I think that's going to be a question, you know, that was where we spent, you know, our first, or my first five months in office chatting about. And I think we had some successes, some losses there. But, you know, I, I would agree that this is going to be an ongoing issue. And we've seen that dumping also in not just our natural resources, but also in the canal and near the river. Okay. So are there any other questions? From, I, I'll also take, if there are any questions from members of the public, just specifically regarding this plan. Doesn't look like it. So can I ask, so this resolution is a part of our applicant, the resolution that's on the agenda tonight is a part of our application. I've also sent this resolution to the County Commission. The Commission Chair already wrote us a letter of support, but the more bipartisan support that we can get here, the like, the higher likelihood of interest our project will have. Unfortunately, New Jersey doesn't have a lot of Republicans. So we're actually lucky to be in Hunterdon County so that we can prove some bipartisan support. So are there any questions from, or I'm sorry, before we vote on this, just want to check. No questions? All right, great. So can I get a motion to adopt Resolution Number 61, 2021?
So moved.
Councilwoman Lambert for the first.
Second.
Councilman Stegman for the second. I seen, we've seen to have lost Cindy. On here. I wanted to see if she's in the attendees. Bill, can you record the vote just in case we?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. So Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Stegman?
Yes.
Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Fall, also yes? Thank you, Bill. Okay. The next is an ordinance on first reading. I'm going to read the title into the record. So the title of this is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of property known as 260 North Main Street and related site improvements in and by the City of Lambeville and the County of Hunterdon, New Jersey, appropriating 3.770, 000 million, so 3.7 million. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 3,770,000 bonds or notes of the city financed part of the cost thereof. So for those in the public who think, who are concerned about deja vu, just a quick explanation here. We have been working with a coalition of organizations since we started this project, including the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, the Hunterdon Land Trust, Green Acres. We've sort of continued to expand that. Now OIS is involved, the county, the county preservation office is also involved. And so we got Cindy's back. Cindy, we had Bill record that, that vote. No problem. Okay. So we have been working with that coalition. It came to our attention that the city, because of the, because this project is primarily a preservation project, we had an opportunity to go to the, we have an opportunity to go to the local finance board and have the down payment of this bond waived. And so that. Uh, and so that is a huge boon to the city of, to the tune of uh one hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred and three dollars. Uh, so if, so the down payment of this uh, of this uh bond otherwise uh would have been on the city to pay. We have an opportunity to not pay it. And basically, all we have to do here is reintroduce this bond without this bond ordinance. Uh, go to the local finance board and uh make our case as to why we think that this is an important project, why it's primarily preservation, uh, that we have, uh, that we are good uh uh potential applicant for Green Acres and that uh we will be seeking state and county uh state funding uh for the preservation of the um, the open space. Uh, had we been, you know, sort of operate, if this had not, if this property had not just been on the general market, uh, and we had gone, we had been doing this directly in partnership with Green Acres first, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to get this. This waiver would be a matter of course. Um, but since we are doing this on an accelerated timeline, uh, we have to go to the local finance board and get this waiver in short order. So uh, we actually were able to work with the chairwoman of Green Acres, Martha Sapp, who is uh really supportive of this project. And she actually wrote a a letter of support indicating that this was uh what we already know, a really exciting project, that it hits all the markers, right? That it's got stormwater, historic preservation, it's got green acres, um, open space preservation, and that the state thinks that we're an excellent candidate for Green Acres funding. Um, she wrote that letter to the director of local government services uh in full support. And she intends to uh intends to attend and testify on our behalf. So I think we are a really excellent candidate for making this waiver, uh, because of a large part of the argument itself is that Green Acres would think that we are a good candidate for Green Acres funding. So having the chair say, yes, I think we are a good candidate for Green Acres funding, puts us in an excellent position. Um, the Green Acres uh staff is actually so excited about this project that they um uh have agreed to continue to meet with us. Um, if by some off chance, we don't get this waiver, to work with us to finance the down payment of this bond. Um, uh, basically, because they want to make sure that this project isn't a burden to taxpayers, but and is, you know, as as responsibly done as possible and still can actually happen. So we're in a really good place because of all of the work that our coalition partners like Jackie Middleton and Jay Watson uh, and now uh Green Acres have um uh have sort of put us in the, on the right direction. So we're reintroducing, this bond is no different. It doesn't affect the resolution we passed previously, saying that we were still going to be working on the site work and site uh project plan at a later date in a more comprehensive way. This is basically the exact same bond, but without the waiver. And it's a um, it's a requirement of our, in order for us to be considered uh by the local finance board. Um, we expect, and I feel very confident at this point, that we'll be getting on their April fourteenth um hearing and uh which will keep us on track to pass our second bond ordinance or, and do our public hearing uh on April twenty second with the same closed date of March fifteenth. If for some reason we can't do that, then we will have to um have a conversation about timing and some of the other logistics of the contract. Um, but at this point, I do feel very confident because of the interest from uh some of our government partners that we'll be able to move this forward in short order. So um with that, are there any questions from members of council regarding this resolution? Oh, excuse me, the first reading of this bond ordinance?
Just one clarification, Mary, you said the closing March fifteenth, just it's May fifteenth if this all goes well.
Why I keep doing that? I have said that in almost every conversation that we've had about this. Yes, May fifteen, March fifteen is past, does not exist anymore.
I'm sure everybody figured that out, but just in, just so we didn't scare anybody.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this uh ordinance? Okay, I mean, we're, I think this is uh an excellent opportunity to, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to give some context to your um, if it had to come out of our capital uh improvement fund, which, you know, we would, would be sort of a terrible blow to our budget. It would cost the general public um eighty two dollars and twenty cents um in a one-year hit. Uh, we don't want to do that. We don't have to. We're applying for these grants for exact, uh, these types of waivers for exactly that reason. And I'm really excited about uh the opportunity to save everybody some money and to uh, you know, to continue sort of solidifying these partnerships. Once we've sort of locked in with Green Acres, uh, this isn't the only opportunity for us um for grant money with this program. And um from everything that we've heard from our Green Acres partners, you know, we've got, you know, potentials for fifty percent um reimbursement based on value, uh, stewardship grants. This is a really exciting um opportunity for the city. So uh, can I get a motion to hear on first reading uh bond ordinance number eleven twenty twenty one?
I moved.
Council President Taylor for the first.
Second.
Councilman Sanders for the second. Um, can I get a roll call vote?
Uh, since this um bond ordinance is essentially what, in terms of of cost and debt, uh, what we uh introduced a couple of weeks ago on March twenty fifth, um, my concerns remain unchanged, so I'm voting no. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stagman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Fall?
Yes.
Um, I am, I I'm really sorry to hear that, Councilwoman Lambert. This is a a big opportunity for our community to save a lot of money. Um.
All right. Can you explain how we're not saving the money?
Uh, I think that if the council this, having a no vote when we're about to go in front of the local finance board, uh, when we are making an argument that this is a a really worthwhile project, puts this project at further risk. And since you know that we have four votes in support of this ordinance, um, you've put, you know, y- you voted against the city saving a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So does the local finance board require unanimous approval of?
It doesn't require it, and I'm not saying that, you know, your vote, uh, all I'm saying is that this ordinance is going to go through, and this is an opportunity for us to save a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So it's been introduced and if the introduction passed, right?
It did. But this is a, we have to go, we're going to be presenting in front of the board, and it will pass with a four one majority. I I have to register that I'm I'm very disappointed to hear that you're not, particularly because of your financial concerns, that about this bond, that you don't want to put the city in the best possible case to make uh, to make our best case for all the grant money that we can get for this uh and state money that we can get for this uh project. Okay, moving on. Uh, resolution number sixty two, this is a resolution for the city of Lamberville to uh in the county of Hunterdon, New Jersey, making an application to the local finance board pursuant to NJSA four A uh colon two dash seven D and two dash eleven C. This is a resolution uh confirming that uh the city should uh, you know, has made an application to waive its down payment and uh to, you know, to be heard in front of the local finance board. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay, hearing none. Uh, can I get a motion for, to adopt resolution number sixty two twenty twenty one?
So moved.
Councilman Stagman for the first, Council President Taylor for the second. Uh, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Lambert? Uh, since this is the actual step that will save us uh the amount of money, I am voting yes. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stagman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Fall?
Yes. All right, so let's move on to new business here. Um, uh, I have, I'd like to start with Sparkle Week because I think that's going to generate the most uh discussion amongst our board, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to finish this tonight. So I want to get this off the books first. Um, so the Sparkle Week, um, uh, right, last year, we had a really significant usage of Sparkle Week. Uh, we had uh almost twice the total load that we had to carry out, um, because everybody was at home and doing their uh, doing their, you know, sort of spring cleaning, COVID cleaning early. Uh, so we had a lot of issues with folks uh basically using this as a bulk pickup, right? So beds, uh futons, you know, really a significant amount of of large stuff was put out on the sidewalk and it's it increased uh our weight significantly. There are two ways for us to, we've, we've put together the new um bulk permit requirements. Um, and we passed that as a board together. Um, but for Sparkle Week, we really have to figure out how we want to enforce this. And I think that there are two options. The first is that we charge a uh basically a uh base fee to participate in Sparkle Week uh at a hundred and fifty dollars uh that, and you can put uh functionally anything out in Sparkle Week that you need. And that if you don't apply and pay for the permit, that you uh won't be able, that your uh your Sparkle Week stuff won't be collected. Uh, the alternate is to have uh Sparkle Week continue to be an amenity that the city primarily um uh assumes, but that if you put out uh any of the bulk stuff uh that's on that list, that the public works department won't pick it up, will put a sticker on that stuff and with a number to the city hall recommending that you apply for a permit. Um, there are pluses and minuses to both of these. I think though, the major minus um is that stickering um and sort of sorting through what is bulk and what is not um on that list isn't added, is a lot of added work for the public works department um and would slow down the pickup of the Sparkle Week pickup. Uh, however, I think we can all agree that a um, a base cost for Sparkle Week would be um difficult for folks to uh, to get the word around and educate folks that there was a a base cost and may create some hubbub um as people feel like Sparkle Week is a part of the uh, you know, the amenities that their taxes cover. So I want to bring this to the governing body to sort of hear what folks have to say. Uh, no option um will be that we do this the same as we did last year because it's a really significant bore on our um, on our solid waste budget. Um, it costs the city a lot of money and uh we, so we've got to address this in some way. So are there any ideas?
So um, the the cost of this is something that, I I mean, last year may have been maybe an especially big year, but this is a perennial issue. I think um, and and Councilman Stagman may remember this from Cindy, but I think the year where we lost the state funding, we had to sell the property on Church Street. Um, I think we also canceled Sparkle Week uh at that time because of the budget crunch.
I think we charged a, charged a permit fee.
Did we?
Yeah, I think it was a hundred dollars for anybody who wanted to participate in Sparkle Week.
Yeah, so I mean, th- this isn't a costly endeavor and and I I don't think it was just related to COVID. I mean, it's just, I think it's, you know, it's, 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 um, I think it's, 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 it happens each year um that we do this. Um, I do, uh, the first option, I think, um, will um price out people from participation in a way that, you know, some people aren't putting beds and mattresses and dressers and things out, and if they still have to put a hundred and fifty dollars out, if I understood the proposal. Um, it just, it, you know, there's things of value that, or people find value um in uh, in what people are putting out. And I think it would, it would um, uh, it would really limit the size of this. Um, I really like the idea, and there's scrap vendors that come by. Uh, I mean, I put a futon out that somebody took that I wouldn't have expected, you know, somebody to take. Um, and so there's a lot of recycling that happens as part of this that I wouldn't want to um price folks out of and not participate in that. Um, so so to me, the first option is, does not seem like a good option, certainly not at that dollar value. Um, the second one, I don't know if there's a way to soften the blow on to the work of public works. Um, but um, but I I do think, you know, uh, you know, to tagging that and that which does not get taken is what we charge for seems fairer. You know, if people are putting out good dressers and they just don't want it, you know, and it gets taken, you know, uh, it doesn't make sense to me to charge them for something that uh that's taken away uh and used by somebody else. So I I I, if you, maybe we could look at what, how that tagging process works and see if there's maybe other resources we could use to help out public works. But to me, that's a more attractive option. I don't know if there's other options out there, but the first option to me, I think, will just, you know, it's a tough time and a lot of folks. Um, a hundred and fifty dollars is a lot of money to ask people to uh, and and I think we, you know, you know, you you you, you don't get that reuse and recycling that happens is a big part of this.
I appreciate. Does impact the clerk's office too, because all of the payments will come into us. So I think if we're, you're going to go with option two, which I I don't have a preference either way. It's just we're going to have to slow the process down because it's not only going to overload my office, it's going to overload public works for the pickup to try and sort through.
Yeah.
The, you know, from it, okay, you have a couch, you've got a tag that we can't take that, you don't have a permit, you know, try and refi.
I just wondered, I wonder if we could do this in zones and spread out the process so that we're not, it's not one, the whole town does Sparkle Week, you know, and and it's on your regular pickup. If it was, if there was a, you know, a slower cadence to this, it might uh, you know, give public works a little bit more time and you a little bit more time to to handle the extra work that's involved in all this.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I see both sides, the pluses and minuses here are pretty clear. I wonder, so I think um Councilman Sanders' suggestion is a good one. I'm sorry, good night. Okay, um, Councilman Sanders is a good one, suggestion is a good one. Um, something else we might consider is if we had, if we did the permit route, but did it like in two or three um, you know, buckets, so like a hundred and fifty, you can put out whatever you want and you get a red permit. For fifty bucks, you put out the normal stuff and you get a green permit, whatever it is. Just some way, I mean, I don't think the city can continue to afford um to absorb all of these costs, but just some way so that we don't. There is something special about Sparkle Week, so if we can keep it, somehow keep that that specialness alive while recouping some of the costs, that would be good.
Um, I I agree with uh Councilman Sanders and Council President Taylor. Um, I'm less in favor of the hundred and fifty dollars uh because of the price point, but also I think people will pull the hundred and fifty dollars and just dump, right? And one address, and I don't know that we'd have any way to contain that. Um, or.
Or something even worse, um, people drive around and just put the, their refu- their stuff on someone else's property without even, you know, put it out in front of someone else's house. So I I think that gets um a little messy. It's, it's possible, maybe we have to have a sparkle month instead of a week, you know, where we, like Councilman Sanders said, where we have um zones and you do maybe, I don't know, one zone a week or, you know, I don't know, so I I, but I would be more in favor of something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I hear the the idea about sort of spreading this out to reduce push on both the clerk's office and Public Works. My concern is um having been an elected official through two Sparkle Weeks now, by the end of the second week of Sparkle Week, the increase in the complaints about refuse on people's lawns uh spikes significantly.
I think the, I think the idea would be though that you would say, you know, whatever, the, you know, do it by voting districts or whatever, but you just have a certain area and say, this is the zone that you're allowed to do for this week. Say that, you know, you know, uptown.
Yeah, but respectfully, we all know that the second Sparkle Week happens regardless of if you're in Zone A or Zone B, like week one or week two, the second people put stuff out and there's pickers coming around, everybody puts their stuff out. So the question is, are we willing to bear a longer period of time where the city, you know, appears more or less unkempt? Um, and I don't know the answer to that, Steg, uh, Councilman Stegman.
That's okay. The uh, I I have your, I have the same concern that you have about, you know, it it it's challenging enough when we have a Monday holiday to be able to uh have the manpower to pick up that trash uh when we expect visitors coming in on a Monday holiday. Um, I I I can see uh this uh, the possibility of people having items in front of their houses, no matter what zone there are, they are in for weeks. So if we don't try to compress it into the two-week period, I think that that, and I also hear, uh, I agree with the other, other uh statement and specifically what's to stop people from chipping in and on a block and just putting all their stuff in front of one house? And then Public Works comes by and you don't know whether to take it or throw a match on it. God forbid, the uh, yeah, and do you think, and and I leave this to you, cuz you you you, uh, I'm the question out there to all the council people, that because last year was so big, because people were home, they were able to have the time to clean out everything they've been s- waiting for Sparkle Week for, that this, that is a possibility that this year could be less uh than it has been?
I mean, regardless, I think to Councilman Sanders' point, which I really appreciate, regardless if it goes back down to its normal bulk, which I doubt that it will, right? You know, people are, um, I don't know about you, but uh, my wife has been cleaning the attic now for uh since quarantine started and it just never, see, the refuse never seems to stop. So uh, I think, you know, I think that we are gonna see, my guess is that we are going to see another significant year this year. But even if we don't, uh, to Councilman Sanders and Councilman Taylor's uh point, this has already been a burden on uh, on the city and doing something to um, to reduce that burden. For instance, you know, the idea of enforcing uh the permitting uh for bulk items, I think would be something has to be done, we cannot just go back to, you know, this is probably gonna be like it was in twenty-eighteen, and so it's fine.
The other thing I think we wanna um make sure we try to avoid as best as possible is I I I've, I I I have some sense that there are people bringing things into town knowing that it's a way to get rid of stuff and dropping it at residences here, uh, you know, with with the residents, you know, approval. But i- i- this shouldn't be about local, other local communities bringing their stuff in here. I just don't think people understand that they think this magically goes away and it doesn't cost the city money, i- it does through our tipping fees. So we can't have, you know, friends in, you know, neighboring towns bringing stuff in. There's a way to police that, I don't know if that's possible, but uh, it's something that uh I'm a little concerned about cuz I've heard stories and and seen a little bit of this, so.
Yeah, so what I'll say is I know Lieutenant Brown is aware of it, um, and for the folks who are driving into the city with big truckloads of um stuff. Uh, I know that we have, uh, I I believe at least that we've stopped some of those bad actors. Um, you know, we had a very similar problem with the convenience center being open twenty-four-seven. We now card folks at the convenience center, but it's really not possible to police on an individual level here. Um, but I do wanna try and, you know, I think we've sort of identified the question, and now I wanna drill into some more specifics. I gave two specific examples of how I think we could manage this, and I've heard some thoughts from all of you on what you thought about it, but I would prefer if we get down to sort of brass tacks here. So does anybody else have any other ideas besides the two that were presented?
Well, I guess I would just ask about timing, um, like, wh- by when do we need to have a decision?
So uh, Sparkle Week this year is the, Cindy, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong here, I believe it's the second and third week in August? Never get those right. Okay, so um, we're going to need some time to prepare members of um the city if uh we make significant permit change, changes, right? So if we decide to do some amount of either green or red permitting as um in your suggestion or um uh, you know, try and send out, uh, potentially, we could send out, you know, some educational pieces uh to the public to let them know what's, you know, if you've got beds and refrigerators, get, get rid of them before Sparkle Week, so we'll need some amount of time to educate the public, no matter what we decide to do.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I'm happy to hear whatever other ideas um people have now. I'm I'm asking just because I don't, don't know if we're gonna be prepared to make a decision at this juncture, I think this requires a little more consideration.
I agree, yeah, I was just hoping that we could get some, instead of just sort of the comments on my ideas, to get other ideas or sort of, you know, a consensus on what folks think is the right next step.
If I might, I have a question, what, how much revenue do you think the, this change um will bring into this, head, into the city to offset the cost of the tipping fees?
We, I don't expect this to even even out, we will still take a significant hit. Even if we did the full hundred and fifty dollar per household permit, we would still be at a loss. So I, you know, it is technically revenue because it's dollars coming in, but it won't offset the total cost of sparkle.
Right, I asked this, I can't remember the answer, but um, but what was, what was the additional, like the over the normal tipping fees or cost to?
Cindy, you might correct me here, the last time that I met with Lester, it was almost double what we did in previous years in twenty-twenty.
Know what I mean, from a normal pickup, the the the, at the actual holding of a, of a sparkle uh week?
I don't have that number on me, Cindy.
Uh, I do not have that in front of me, Ward, but I will make sure that I post that tomorrow for y'all.
Um, it is, I remember, no.
It would be an interesting uh thing to see, dollar-wise.
Yeah, I I I'd agree that we're gonna have a hard time doing it uh um at this meeting, but I think you're giving it some thought and maybe some, some work in between meetings here, um, we can get to a resolution pretty quickly on this.
Great, I would hap- be happy in between this meeting and the next to hearing concrete ideas from members of the council. Um, and then we can present those ideas, we'll have some time to go back and look at uh, look at costs and make some recommendations based on any of those um, those ideas uh in terms of how we can mitigate the stress on Public Works and the um clerk's office.
Right, and may- maybe August is in a good time because August is tax time and we're going to be inundated with taking taxes.
We may, I mean, there, uh, we may be able to, instead of considering these bulk permits, we might be able to do online applications, um, there's a couple of other ways we could sort of slice this. Um, I know municipa- we don't have municipal set up for any of the permitting.
But we're working on WIP and we might, we might have that set up by the end of the week.
So we, we can potentially work on an online application with a printout instead, which would significantly reduce the clerk's uh, the clerk's role, or um you know, there might be a mail, like if we do a mail, an education piece in a mail that you can fill out your request permit and have it sent in the mail. And that um may reduce the sort of uh last minute, two weeks before uh Sparkle Week push. So Cindy, you and I can game plan some of those after we get um other recommendations from members of council.
Sure, other towns do similar events, uh, and I get, I know there's um the easy way to identify that, I just wonder if we could learn from other folks.
You know, it's difficult because of lot, I'm sorry.
Milford does, they, and they were just talking, maybe it was Ringo's. They're doing like some type of a a big event, kind of like a um, you know, that where you put your stuff out two weeks before they collect, you know, and you have a day where you put everything out and that you want people to come by and pick through, and then you have to take it back in. But then those other items you can, you know, put in the garbage.
The other thing is, Councilman, a lot of municipalities and communities have regularly open dumps that take bulk items, which obviously we don't have, so the need for a Sparkle Week is a little bit different.
Yeah, and I think that the spirit in town is the, you know, turning garbage into gold here is to, you know, take somebody else's uh trash and recycle it in that in a way that's uh, we keep it out of um the trash.
So Cindy, Cindy, you just said something about Milford, is that like a little amnesty situation that they do? Could you explain that again?
I don't know if, I don't remember which kid it was, I don't know if it was Milford or Ringo's.
Oh.
I think it was Ringo's, um, but they're doing something like a, a townwide yard sale, it's not a sale, you can put your things out and do a swap. And then um, then two weeks later, they're, they're doing sparkle, something like that. I kinda overheard them.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. Yeah, it's, it, it seems like we, maybe we want to promote something like that where we encourage the trading and foraging that people have come to love. But, but it goes, but with the understanding that it goes out for, you know, a weekend, whatever, and people come from far and wide to pick through, but then they have to bring it back in, and then they have to put it back out for the real, real pickup. And that's where you could um put the requirement on permits for any bulk items that are remaining and and just have the smaller things sit out on the curb. I mean, it does mean two rounds, but that's kind of what Cindy was talking about.
So, but isn't that what we do in Sparkle Week anyway, right? Like your pickup is on Thursday and people put stuff out Monday, or as Councilman uh, Councilman Stegman mentioned, you know, a week in advance, they let everybody pick through it, and then, you know, the real trash day is that Thursday. So how would this, would it just be that it would be incumbent on the, on the resident to get a permit between that Monday and Thursday?
Oh, I see what, well, I was thinking that the um the, 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 I I don't know what what I'm gonna use, I'll I'll say the amnesty part, where you just put stuff out and people tr- the trading, trading part, if you will, or the pickup part would take place, um, you know, I don't know, a weekend or something, and then I I don't, you have, I, it doesn't have to be the following by their trash, the next trash day, we could schedule it maybe two weeks later, you know, for the actual pickup, so it would mean an inconvenience for the residents because they'd have to put stuff out, bring it back in, and potentially put it back out again, and you know, if it didn't, if it didn't go.
But if we know that they're open for the first part of Sparkle Week for people to pick through, why wouldn't we just have that amnesty available to them that week? So the, I I just feel like we're, we're potentially just recreating the wheel here, right? That people already put their stuff out early, it gets picked, and then it gets picked up at your next trash day.
Right, but we're trying to, we're trying to insert um an opportunity to recoup the cost, right, of of the large bulky items that are remaining. And all I'm saying is, if we kind of separated the two events time-wise, we, we, residents would have an opportunity to get the permits for the items that are left over that need to be picked up. I don't, I wasn't intending that it would be that same week, although I I mean, I, I guess we could, but um, but there'd have to be an understanding among the community that anything that is bulk item that's left over needs to have a permit or you're taking it off the curb.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, I mean, it's an idea, you ask for ideas, so I'm.
I'm, I'm excited to hear ideas, yeah, I just wanna, I'm just trying to understand your idea, so how would we?
Well, we kind of, yeah, we have to talk through the process, so, I mean, it could be, I guess it could be done in the same week, I don't know. I mean, I'm kind of looking at Cindy thinking, is, you know, is that gonna be like a, a, an administrative, you know, uh, free-for-all, trying to get the permits issued within a short period of time? That's why I was thinking if you separated time-wise and you had, okay, you put out this stuff, whatever's, you know, uh, whatever's left and it's bulk, you gotta take it back in. And then you have to put it back out. Or, or, I mean, maybe that's the thing, maybe you just make them, maybe we just ask the community, not make them, we're not making them do things, sorry. We just ask the community to, that, you know, if it's a bulk item and it, nobody picked it up, you gotta get it off the curb, and if you want us to take it, you, or you can buy a permit.
Right, so, but that's, that's what we, I, one of the recommendation was to not pick up the bulk items and then have them come get a permit.
Or, well, I thought we were saying that they had to buy the permit in advance and know what their stuff was, but I guess we weren't saying that. So, yeah, we probably are saying the same thing, so, I mean, the, you know, I I'm not sure how many options there are.
Yeah, I mean, so like Councilwoman Taylor said, we're not gonna be able to solve this tonight, but let's try and come up with, uh, if there are any other ideas of how we could sort of make sure that we can keep the heart and soul of Sparkle Week, which is the sort of picking through trash and, or, you know, picking through items, getting rid of stuff, uh, but also simultaneously um ensuring that we are uh, we are enforcing our bulk item pickup. I think that's really the crux of the question here. Um, it seems clear that the uh, the general, um, the general fee is generally i- is not acceptable here, which I think is fine. So if there are any other ways in which we could uh enforce the bulk permit, uh bulk uh trash permit usage, I think that's really the crux of the question here.
Well, ma- maybe we, maybe we consider doing a separating the bulk out of Sparkle Week and have a bulk day, a bulk weekend or something, so you, so there's not that much stress on Public Works. And that'll give us a really good sense of, of, of uh of how, how to kind of, not, not stretch this out, but just do the bulk at a completely different time.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bad idea.
A different way.
You know, unfortunately, like, I have concerns about how we enforce that with the public, right, because the whole idea of like folks roaming around town, picking up little gems, right? Uh, that's based around the bulk portion of the, of the stuff that comes out, right? Like, just like Councilman Sanders said, right, it's folks putting uh armoires out that they don't want anymore and somebody coming and selling it at the Golden Nugget. So um, I think it's worthwhile for us to be. And somebody coming and selling it at the Golden Nugget. So, um, I think it's worthwhile for us to be thinking about this. Um, and it's set a goal of making some, um, making some action so we have time to, uh, educate the public on this because there's going to have to be some sort of change. And I think it's going to be, we, we have to think through what is, you know, with the culture around sparkle week, what's really possible here. Um, so let's try and set that we'll make a decision on this by the end of May. Um, so that we can send out any mailings, emails, um, start to educate the public on this. And if you have any ideas to reach out to Cindy and I, uh, we'll be working on this as well. And then we'll bring it up at our next, uh, voting session. Does that sound fair?
Sure.
Great. Okay. Moving on. Uh, lost my list. Okay. Um, Shadfest. Uh, we are working towards, uh, the, the, um, Chamber of Commerce, I believe, is working towards re- announcing a new date for Shadfest. It will not be in April. Obviously we're deep into the heart of April. Um, but, uh, we, they have not set a date. It looks like depending on how the, uh, pandemic continues to go, that they're looking at, um, mid fall for.
October ninth and 10th, man.
Oh, it's, it's finalized?
We just received a letter from them. I, yeah.
Oh, okay. News to me. Good that we announced it. So, um, the city will be taking some extra precautions and working with the, um, Chamber of Commerce to ensure that, uh, sparkle week, I'm sorry, she's, Shadfest is, uh, is safe. And, uh, you know, but also successful. We know it's an important part of our Chamber of Commerce's, uh, uh, annual fundraising. Any questions on that?
Just, we might make sure that our sparkle week and our Shad Festival don't coincide.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, but I think August, October.
Yeah.
Are enough away. Um, but if we do do, um, you know, separate dates, uh, for pickups, um, versus sort of the community, you know, giveaway stuff, then we'll have to make sure that those don't coincide. Okay. Um, Cindy, we have a bound, we have boundary change on here.
Yes, I think Bill, um, is prepared to speak about that right there.
Great. Bill.
Yeah. So, uh, there was an application before, um, the planning board, uh, recently. And one of the conditions was that, um, and I'll just to give some context. Um, let me just find it in my notes. Okay. Uh, so back in 2015, the city adopted an ordinance to rezone, um, properties fronting Bridge Street and Ferry Street to remove instances of split zoning. Uh, they wanted to make those streets have, uh, be all part of one zone. Um, since the rezoning occurred subsequent to a minor subdivision on that street for lot 26, um, it created a flag stem, if you can imagine, you know, um, basically a, a piece of property that looks like a flag with, you know, a flag pole with a flag sticking off of it. Um, a portion of property that fronts on Bridge Street. So lot 26 was rezoned within the R2 residential district. Um, and based on where the building situated on that lot was located and on the use of the property. Um, as part of a recent planning board application, the board requested and the applicant agreed that the two lots should be rezoned to reflect the new boundary line. Um, that's set forth. Um, the applicant sent, um, a request to the city, um, for that consideration. Um, ultimately what has to happen is the, um, the city council or the, the governing body, but then the mayor and council. Um, i- if, if it's decided to go forward with that effort, it would, um, introduce an ordinance and refer it to the planning board for consistency with the master plan. So, um, I obtained the relevant information from the planning board attorney. I'm still going through it. Um, I got a little backtrack, but, um, I'm going to prepare a memo. Um, laying out the legislative steps that would be required. Ultimately, this is the council's decision to make. Um, so, you know, I, I'll, you know, provide further information as to that, but I just want to put it on your radar that, um, so that when you see it, it's not brand new. I'll provide all the back of information, the planning board resolution, all that stuff. So, and then I'll condense it. So you'll be able to make an informed decision as to whether or not you want to go forward with this.
Bill, is it the, uh, the flag pole, uh, is the, the pole, uh, that fronts Bridge Street and the flag part is Ferry Street?
I don't have an answer for that right now. I have to look at, I have documents I haven't gone through. I, I can't say.
You know, the, uh, can you share the address with us?
Sure. It is, um, I have the block in line. I'm sorry. I don't have the streets, but I'll, I'll provide that information. It's, um, it's block 1042 lots 25 and 26. If you give me two minutes, I can probably pull it up.
Um, Cindy, can I just request that when we do hear this boundary change issue that, um, our planner is also on, um, and available to.
They'll do.
Governing body.
So I'm sorry. So just in terms of the next steps, then, uh, Bill, you're going to get us, uh, the background materials for this, uh, for our consideration at the, I guess, in an upcoming meeting, right?
I will. Uh, you'll have all the information you need to make a decision on how you want to proceed. Uh, it's 51 Bridge Street.
And we'll be presented with all the rationale and all that background material. That'd be great. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Bill before we move on? Hearing none. Uh, Council President Taylor, do you want to give a quick update on the Elizabeth Town Gas, um, Music Mountain project?
Yes. Um, we've been talking with Elizabeth Town Gas for over a year now about the possibility of getting gas service up on Music Mountain where there, it currently is not gas service. It goes up to, uh, about the rescue squad and that, and that's it. So the conversations, um, have included surveys of residents to see who's interested, who's not interested. Um, working with Elizabeth, Elizabeth Town Gas to figure out what the costs might be to residents who would be interested. And one of the questions that has come up is that, um, they want to know if we would allow them to not do curb to curb paving after they run any new, any new gas mains. So we have rules that say that for all utilities, the, the paving needs to be curb to curb. Um, so they've been sort of asking us, what can we do about this? And, and Cindy and I talked it over and decided it would be best to raise it to the full council. Especially given that we both live on Music Mountain.
So, um, we made the change to the permit, uh, to require curb to curb paving, curb to curb paving. Um, I, in my first few months as mayor, we did that in part because of a water uh, project in 2018 that left streets in really significantly bad shape. Uh, and then even with, when the trenching was really directly in the middle of the street, these guys, you know, the, um, the companies were only paving half the street. Um, it reduces the life of our paving and, um, looks bad. Um, I have concerns. I really want this project to go forward. I know you've been, have been working really diligently on this. I have concerns about waiving paving requirements for a project because it's wanted. Um, that will give a, uh, which will open the door to, um, ongoing waivers and get us back to a place, you know, right now we have full authority to say this is a requirement of our road opening permit, end of sentence. It is required, right? So the Y M A C project, they were trying to make a claim to the planning board that they didn't, they shouldn't have to do curb to curb because it was only on one side of the street. Uh, the, the answer back was simply, our permit says this. We enforce this at a hundred percent. End of conversation. You have to pave curb to curb. So that's my, um, I, I, we've seen a significant increase in the curb to curb paving since we started doing this. And I think it's been a boon to the aesthetics of the city and also the longevity of our streets. Um, but I am only one voice here and ultimately I know that this is a quality of life issue for Music Mountain. Um, so it's a difficult question. I just want to make sure that we're aware that this is really, this has been a change in policy since 2019. And it's worked and I'm very concerned about, um, losing that momentum.
So, um, uh, maybe I'll give Bill a little time to think about this. But the one question I would have would be about our ability to waive exist. I mean, you know, we're sort of, the idea is not to act in an arbitrary and capricious fashion and, and an ad hoc decision-making. If we have a law on the books, um, what ability do we have to, to waive it? And while he's thinking about that, I, I, I guess, I, to me, this is a little bit different in that a utility has a responsibility to keep its infrastructure up to date. I guess they don't have a responsibility to extend the line to an additional community. And to me, if there was a, if it could be demonstrated, there was a community preference to extend the line. And they were okay with, you know, not having curb to curb, uh, paving. You know, that might be influential in the, in the decision-making if we, if we, if we could waive it. Um, so it's, it's a little bit different than their responsibility to keep up their existing infrastructures. If, if, if the answer is curb to curb is a deal breaker for them to, to do that neighborhood, we may not be serving our residents well if that's their, you know, if that were their preference. That, that'd be my concern. And, and Bill, do you have a sense of, just on the waiver issue, I mean, you know, what ability we have to just kind of waive an existing requirement like that? If, if we're, you know, all over town.
I think your instincts are right with regard to arbitrary and capricious action. I have to, I don't, I can't do it right now. But I, I'd like to be able to look at the city code, um, to see if there's any provision in there. Um, any requirements that would allow it. Um, you, you kind of want to treat all entities, you know, in a similar fashion. You don't want to make exceptions on the fly. Um, but I'll, I'll look into that a little bit further and, and see, you know, what would be permitted that would be able to stand up to the required scrutiny.
Bill, you might want to also think about, you know, uh, in a lot of the pre-construction negotiations that happen amongst the utilities, these, you know, uh, at least in previous years. I, I've held a really strong line on the, um, curb to curb paving. But, um, I know that some of, that, um, in other municipalities, that the, uh, the pre-con meetings are where people make negotiations like this. And so it may, there may be sort of general precedence to allow for, um, those types of negotiations during pre-construction. So I, I do think there's a mechanism by which we could, um, agree to remove it from the permit for this project.
Um, Councilwoman, the Council President, uh, Taylor, how many homes are approximately are affected by this project?
There are about 56 homes. Not everybody has said that they want gas.
Okay.
There's a group of people who have said, yes, if it were available, we'd want it. There's a group of people who say, nope, don't want it. And then there's another group that says, I can't make this decision without the costs. And that's where we've sort of gotten stuck is like, what will this cost to get to people? And the cost depend, you know, the cost goes up or down to the homeowner based on how many people that Elizabeth Town would be adding to its roster. So, um, it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult. Um, you know, I, I wish that we could say it's everybody up here wants it. That would make it a lot easier to have the discussion, but that's not the case. And we don't have the cost. So there's more information gathering we have to do. But we wanted to raise the question so that you all were aware, could think about it, give guidance. And then frankly, it helps us be able to say to Elizabeth Town Gas, like this is what the governing body has decided or is considering or has concerns about.
The, uh, might just jump, jump in, 19, Elizabeth Town Gas was actively uh, trying to attract clients, uh, when I moved into this house, which was 94. Um, and they even financed at no interest the cost to the homeowner to, to have the work done at that point. I think, and I think, I think it was like $3,000 uh, to help defray the costs of getting the gas from Studiford Street where there was a main apparently because of the development of, uh, of Woodcrest from there, you know, to the house. So, um, which, which really beat the cost of electric heating at the time. So, um, it, it'd be interesting to talk to government relations person from Elizabeth Town Gas and just see, you know, what they're, what the company can do for the, uh, the per, the homeowner who wants to use their utility.
They have proposed, it, it, depending on the numbers, they have proposed that this could cost the homeowner anywhere from $0 to $10,000 or $12,000 or more. So it, it's a numbers game from, as, as, as it stands.
That's a big range. Yeah. That's a big difference.
And I guess that's, and that, that, that really doesn't, it, if we took off the requirement to do curb to curb, how much more than $12,000 would it be?
I mean, that's, that's what we want to understand.
Yeah, that, that's a huge amount of money. You know, they, I, I think they've got to make a commitment to serve the public. And if their commitment is to lay new gas pipes on streets that are currently don't have gas as a utility, then, then I think they have to put skin in the game. Cause they, because not only are, are, are the people on Music Mountain and for Cottage Hill as well, we have this, on most of Cottage Hill, it doesn't have gas either, is that they have to make a commitment to this, a, a larger commitment than being able to pick up 26 houses out of, you know, that are, that are stretched far apart and make a commitment to, uh, you know, to the citizens of the city that they are, that, that they are serious and they want to put the gas in. And, uh, and, and, uh, and go from there. I mean, uh, we don't have many choices of, 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 uh, purveyors of, uh, of that, uh, by that you, by that utility. So, uh, you know, I, I think we have to talk to them on a level where it's a little bit broader of, um, conversation.
Can you, um, can you explain that in a little bit more detail to me? When you say they need to make a commitment and what do you mean by talking on broader terms? I just want to get a clearer picture of how they could actionably do either of those things.
Right, right. Uh, well, you know, when, 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 um, Comcast came to the city, they made a commitment to make cable available to everybody. Uh, when, uh, Verizon, uh, kind of tried to get into the game though, that they made a commitment to do fiber optics in the city throughout the city, no matter who used it. And I think, uh, you know, Lambertville, uh, the Suez made a commitment to run, uh, uh, their water, you know, as, as far as they could at the time. And they, you know, and they're, both some of us have, still have wells and, uh, around the city. So I, I'm saying that if, if Elizabeth Town Gas wants, wanted to approach this from a, uh, a business perspective, wouldn't it make sense for them to provide the service? Uh, to, you know, to as many people that wanted to use it and just in the hopes that the future, more people would want to use the utility. Um, and just, um, bear some of the costs in, in running the gas mains. Get to the, to, you know, up the streets and, and put in that certain amount of infrastructure and give the people a chance to take it. That they want to use it. I mean, uh.
Yeah, I think that the, the issue is because the, there's far less density and fewer houses. It actually doesn't make sense on a business plan for them to do this. So we're asking them to do something that's against their direct interest because they're a, uh, a regulated utility. They have to consider it. And so they're trying to defray costs elsewhere. But I, I'd also mention, you know, each of the three instances that you said when. But I I'd also mention, you know, each of the three instances that you said when these companies made significant commitments to the verbal commitments to the city, um, all three of those things um didn't happen. Right? There was, there's not direct fiber um cable to every home. Comcast has, I think we have a Comcast uh com- committee because of their lack of commitment to a to the community, and a lot of the folks who live on the hills are still on wells. So I think, you know, I want to commend Council President Taylor for hold, you know, we've been, she's been working on this since two thousand nineteen trying to negotiate, you know, a a real, an actual commitment, lines in the ground commitment to from Elizabeth Town Gas.
Um, yeah, my question is what um, I, yeah, I I see your point. Have they, are they able to come up? This is kind of short of the whole curb to curb paving, you know, paving conversation, I think. But have they, have they, you know, if you want to gas in your you know, in up the street so you, so people who live on on the hills can have the utility. Um, you know, I I'm surprised that they can't give a better range in prices than than the ones that they provided.
I think, I think we're on our way to getting to a better, a better quote. Um, a lot of, you know, a lot of this process got derailed by COVID. Um, so Will, this has been helpful conversation. We'll reach back out to them and and just try to get to a better, I mean, we need to understand what the differential is with the curb to curb paving. Um, and just see what's possible. Um, we we've also been trying to get a public meeting because a lot of the people who are maybes want to speak with representatives from Elizabeth Town Gas to understand the process and what the variables are. Um, that hasn't been able to be set up yet, but I think that would probably be our be our next step, I think, was what would be our next request is let's just get all the information on the table.
Um, Council President, I think if we uh, if we move forward on getting what they say the differential between for curb to curb paving is um, I'd like to double check that with either a different utility or um uh, you know, one of the paving, uh, our engineers or one of the paving companies that we use where the roadwork. Um, my guess is, is that the, this is a relative, it's not insignificant, but not a sign, isn't the ten thousand dollar driver. Um, and you know, because this is an expensive endeavor for Elizabeth Town Gas, they are trying to um, put some Christmas ornaments on this tree. Um, and so I just want to make sure that when they make a claim that, you know, it's going to cost them six hundred thousand dollars to pave the roads, that we have some indication of the reality of those costs.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. That's a good idea. I just want to clarify in case my statements were misleading. The 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 cost from zero to ten thousand wasn't based on this curb to curb number. That was based on the number of potential hookups. So we don't know yet what they're saying the differential is.
Can I ask a question about the the, I mean, some of this matters as to the life of the current life of the road and and what those roads that the current shape is. So if you know, if obviously if we had just paved them, you know, that that would, you know, that's one thing if they're in kind of tough shape anyway. Um, that may suggest a different uh kind of views for Cindy or Julia that.
It's been a while and um, you know, like uh, Gene Street has cracking down the middle. Um, I haven't really seen that on the other streets, but it's it's been a while. It's been well over ten years, if not longer, since anybody's done anything to the roads up here. I think it was, they paved prior to them doing the storm drains. So um, Steve, uh, you know, I want to say that was two thousand five, two thousand six.
I will say, not to, you know, I've gone real deep on this conversation about paving, cracking down the middle of a street is an indication of somebody not paving curb to curb.
I I I, Council President Taylor, I I know this isn't, this is a huge undertaking. And you know, you've you've really advanced the possibility of people being able to use natural gas. Um, and it would, it would be, you know, if if we're considering it, that it's considering not them not doing curb to curb, then it should be worked out somehow on our maintenance of the streets up there, so we don't wind up doing it one year and the second year like they come, or the third year or fourth year. A utility comes through and opens up the street again. And I know that's something that I you, that that as a resident, I wouldn't want to see, and you know, you live up there, so you you know, it it takes some little bit of timing and uh so I congratulate you for wrestling the wrestling this question.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we'll we'll do some more uh digging and then and share the updates with everybody. Um, and you know, there are other areas that don't have gas, some parts of the south end of town don't have gas too.
And right, and up on, yeah, up on Cottage Hill, there's limited gas.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, so maybe it's a, maybe it's a discussion that we we expand once you, once it starts to roll towards some kind of conclusion with your efforts to uh, to to get gas up there, maybe we we uh take what you learned and use it in the areas that may want it as well on different parts of the city, and maybe that is enough motivation for the price to come down a bit.
Uh, Bill, would you mind uh in whenever you get the chance informing the council about whatever mechanism we would be able to um, use to make, uh, if we decided to do the uh, to agree to, you know, uh, either trench paving or half half block paving, um, how we would move forward with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I'm going to open up to the uh public participation. So I'm going to remind everybody to state your name and your address for the minutes and then um that we're going to keep our comments to three minutes. So the first up is Paul Stevens.
Paul Stevens, thirty nine Cory. Good evening, everybody. I got three hopefully quick questions here. Uh, unfortunately, on the uh March twenty fifth meeting with the six o'clock start, I missed the first hour. I wasn't able to tune into it till seven o'clock. I've been looking for the recording of it, uh, so I could go back and catch that first hour. Um, I looked on YouTube and I've looked on the Lambertville website, uh, the the city website. And I haven't been able to find that recording of that, the Zoom recording.
Yeah.
To be, has that been put up? And if not, when will it be put up?
We are, we are a man down in our clerk's office right now, and Tina is uh, who usually does our um uploading is uh on a much needed vacation. Um, as soon as she returns, that will be put up.
But that'll be in plenty of time before the April twenty second meeting?
Yes.
Okay, um, then also, when can we expect the introduction of the two thousand twenty one budget to be presented at one at one of the council meetings?
Uh, we are in the process of building our budget right now. We are working with the Department of Local Government Services as well as our um budget consultant. Uh, it is also, there are some uh other questions about uh the financing of the cost and property as well as our capital improvement plan. So we're working on that really diligently right now, uh, but uh I would say I don't have a firm date for you of when we'll be introducing it to the public.
When do you think the two thousand twenty financials, final financial statement will be posted?
The AFDS is being reviewed right now, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so our auditors are working on it. Um, and this is still, we're still in the normal course of due time here.
Yep. Oh, I wasn't saying you weren't. I was just, I don't know when to look for it. That's that's all.
And I'm happy to reach out to you when it becomes public.
Yep. Um, and then my last question gets back to the uh, this new approach for partnering with uh Green Acres for so that the fee can be waived. I guess my only question with that is, are we sure that we're not encumbering ourselves in terms of what future flexibility we have for the, I'm going to call it the excluded part portion of uh the purchase?
Paul, I first of all, I just want to say, this is an excellent question. Um, and it has been the long conversation of both our bond counsel, myself, Council President Taylor, basically everybody who's in these meetings. This, it's really important to us that the preserved land does not gum us up within the non-preserved exclusionary zone of the various houses, um, the entrance and exit, any stormwater management that we do. So um, Green Acres is entirely supportive of this, so too is the historic trust. The state understands that that is our concern, uh, that that is a concern. This waiver is not a guarantee of Green Acres funds. It's actually a waiver by the local finance board. And so uh, it the, having this waived does not encumber us to anything, but also Green Acres is working diligently with us to make a plan for the non-excluded areas. And they're very aware and supportive of not including that exclusionary zone in any of the encumbrances for Green Acres. So this is, that is of high concern to us because we wanted to make the uh, we want to ensure that we're doing what we're telling the public that we're doing, which is uh not making a plan for that internal site, but primarily preserving that property as open space for passive recreation, community gardens, etc.
Good, uh, thank you for that. I'm glad that I
Stellar question.
Yeah, I just didn't understand from what you presented earlier if that had changed with this new way of doing stuff, but I, thank you.
No, and Paul, I just want to thank you. I, it's a really important question and a really good one.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, so I am going to, forgot that I was in charge of this. Herb, can you state your name and your address? You have to unmute her. There's a mute button on the corner of your screen. It's a little microphone.
Gotcha.
There you go.
Okay, any chance of combining Sparkle Week with Dumpster Days? Uh, for people who don't want to take a permit out and want to get rid of some of the junk they brought up from the basement, and they could actually go to a dumpster and drop it off?
I see. So the city would purchase dumpsters and then
Rent, you can rent a dumpster.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, but you your suggestion is, that is basically what the city does. We um, uh, we lease a dumpster space for these bulk items and then have them paid to be pulled away. And Cindy, you're, you're looking at me like I'm crazy.
If there are complaints about people who don't want to uh buy a permit, they can get rid of their own junk in a dumpster.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your recommendation is that people buy their own dumpster or rent their own dumpster.
No, that this city puts in a, in a great spot, a rented dumpster and allows people after Sparkle Week to go and drop your, their stuff that is not picked up in a dumpster.
I see. So that actually, it it's the same mechanism for how we would throw that stuff away, which is a ti, you take it to a a dump area, you pay for the weight of it, and then you pay for a fee to tip your weight. Um, so regardless of whether or not we pick it up from people's houses or put it in a dumpster, the cost of these bulk items is really, is really the issue here.
Okay.
All right, but I appreciate the the recommendation.
Okay.
All right, so I don't see any more hands raised. Um, I'm going to ask Cindy, can you read the closed session resolution title?
Yes, I can. I'm going to close session um, to discuss attorney-client issues related to contracts uh, and the acquisition of property pursuant to NJ SA ten colon four dash twelve B seven.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion uh to go into closed session? So moved. Council President Taylor, Councilwoman Sanders for the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we will be maintaining this fee to, so that we can adjourn, but the council will no longer be doing any um uh, any work on this. Uh, we will come back to adjourn our meeting, but otherwise uh, we won't be doing any other further discussion, so feel free to log off. Um, the council will be in closed session for the rest of the evening. Thanks so much. Cindy? Uh, we have to leave this on. Um, you're muted.
Yep, I got it set.
You got it all set up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was just worried because Tina wasn't here.
Yeah, no, we're all set with this.
Thanks. All right, I don't, uh, oh, um, Mr. Upel, do we actually need to wait for Councilman Stegman or can we close?
Oh, you don't need to have four people to vote. As long as you all vote there, yeah, you can, you can vote now.
All in favor of adjourning? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion to go.
Well, before we do that, um, we're out of closed session and we discussed issues related to attorney-client privilege um in the session. Council obviously didn't act in closed session, um, just so the meeting minutes reflect that, and that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
Nobody else wants to go home tonight or stop talking tonight?
Second, Councilwoman Lambert for the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Night.
Night.